All right, call to order the agenda work session for the Cochise County Board of Supervisors. Today is Tuesday, January 28th pursuant to ARS 38431. The public will have physical access to the meeting place 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion. Members of the Cochise County Board of Supervisors will attend either in person or by telephone or by video internet conferencing. Members of the public may also attend this meeting via Microsoft Teams, computer or mobile app or via phone by calling 602-609-6513 or 888-680-6714, conference ID 609280364. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call 5204329200 for direction. Work sessions are timed for the county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors and public comments for this meeting will not be taken. I will now do roll call. District one.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Crosby is here.
Crosby is present. District two.
Good morning, Gomez is here.
Ms. Gomez is there. And District three, Frank Antonori is here. All members of the board are present. We will now move into items for discussion. We have one item on the agenda and we will first hear from Ms. Gilman who will explain to us what has been brought before us thanks to the guy sitting across the table.
Yes, so as the board is aware, Recorder David Stevens gave his resignation a couple weeks ago and so that then places a duty upon the board to appoint his replacement. We want to discuss with the board what you foresee the process being for that appointment and set out the schedule so that we can inform the public appropriately. The person who is appointed to this position would serve for two years until the primary in 2026 and then would have to run in that primary to complete the four-year term.
And the general subsequent.
And the subsequent general, yes. So this would be a two-year appointment only, just to clarify that. And so we created kind of, we laid out a draft process for you. It's not written in stone by any means. All statute says is that you shall appoint, doesn't give a process and that the person must be Republican and of the party that you were and a qualified elector.
Mr. Stevens.
That does not change the four-year term, so whoever runs in 2016 will have to run again in 2018.
Correct.
So they're going to run back to back?
So the first step of course is to acknowledge the vacancy. We will be putting it on a future agenda. Is that the appropriate thing to do, Paul? To place just the board accepting the resignation.
So question, so does the statute prevent us from conducting all these in advance since we've gotten such advanced notice of his intent to retire? Mr. Crosby.
I see people waving in the audience that they cannot hear in the audience.
Uh oh. Microphones aren't loud enough or am I leaning close enough?
Maybe lean a little closer.
Yeah. Okay, how about, there we go. That was me. I apologize. I will lean forward now. Thank you for that. So we don't have, do we have to issue the notice of vacancy before we have this discussion? Is that what we're saying?
Before we have this discussion, no.
No, okay. Well, I'm talking about the process that Ms. Gilman outlined here. Do we have to have that notice out before we begin this process or is there like a...
Can we do the recruitment process before they accept formally?
Right, you've got a statute where you appoint somebody, you can start now. And this other process I think is designed to, just to organize the data and allow the public to have some participation, right?
Okay, all right. So then after we get the official notice of vacancy, then that's where we make the appointment after that.
So the question that I have for the three of you is which, in the past, how we've handled vacancies is we have put out a press release, information on our website, four letters of intent and a resume of people interested in the appointment. And then the clerk of the board collects those letters, they're all sent directly to the clerk of the board, she compiles a packet, we then provide that information to you after the deadline that's set by the board for those letters of intent. And then there would be a meeting, say, to deliberate on the individuals and determine if you want to have three, four, five of them interviewed, however many rise to the top in your minds. And then you deliberate after the interviews and that would probably be another meeting to schedule those interviews.
Mr. Crosby.
Crosby, District one, Ms. Gilman and Mr. Correa, I'm looking at the term residency requirement and what is the residency requirement and when does it need to be complied with? In other words, does it need to be complied with by the time a person takes office or do they got to be a resident now?
That's a good question.
Well, thank you.
I don't know the answer to that.
Well, we can just save that for...
Yeah, hopefully they're all residents all the time when they start.
Then it won't be an issue, right? So it's just...
Well, residents of what?
Of the county.
Of the county, yes. And it says voter, they have to be registered voters hence as a Republican, right?
And I gather the question is because they're being appointed, they're not being elected, the statute for the recorder talks about somebody running for the office as an elected official.
Well, I don't know from where people might apply, nationwide, statewide.
Right.
And do they have to be here this year? Is that what the requirement was being?
That's the requirement for somebody to run for the office, so I will look at that.
Okay, thank you.
And then our office will verify the party affiliation.
And they got to be registered voters to verify that, so that's why they're...
You will send our office the people, we'll verify the proper, if they already aren't, we'll let you report now.
Okay.
So I'd like to talk with Ms. Gomez and Ms. Crosby about inserting another step in here, if I may. So in light of the fact, and this is my opinion, there's two parts to this office, right? There's the administrative part of executing the duties as the county recorder, which is voter registration, recording of deeds, documents, all that stuff that the county recorder does. And then there's the political side of it where the county attorney and, as we've seen in the past, have had got to go to court, they got to testify, they have to present a political opinion regarding voter registration, regarding voter ID, regarding qualifications and all that other stuff. And they have to interact with our base, to be honest, the precinct committee men and whatnot to gain the support come election cycle so they have a likelihood of being reelected. So they have to have the skillset that got all of us sitting at this table here is they have to be able to campaign, they have to be able to raise money, they have to have the ability to protect the seat, you know, and keep it in Republican hands, just to be blunt. I mean, it is a partisan elected office. So to add the additional step, I would like to get input from the precinct committee men of Cochise County, just like they would when they were placing a state senator or state representative. The PCs weigh in and say, you know, these are the recommendations to the Board of Supervisor to appoint a replacement for the state legislature. I think a similar process should be placed in addition to the receiving applications. I'm not saying I don't want anybody else to apply outside of that process, that's perfectly fine, but in addition to that, I'd like to get input from the precinct committee men of Cochise, the Republican precinct committee men of Cochise County. Mr. Crosby.
In addition to that, Mr. Chair, I would point out that we would also, if we're going to go that way, we'd have to determine the weight of those recommendations.
The weight as in like how many votes they got?
No, whether we are going to voluntarily restrict ourselves to the three candidates.
Oh, no, 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 I don't, that's what I'm saying. We may get, we may get a diamond in the rough that may come in and apply, you know, without going through that process. And again, we're going to have to make, the three of us will have to make that decision. Interview everybody and get the feel, and I could, you know, I'm sitting here today because I have a pretty good spider senses and reading people, so I will have a pretty good idea after talking to them who I think is likely to be best suited to fill that vacancy. So I think...
You're asking that we include kind of the weight of, well, this would be the Republican Party, the precinct people in there. Now, my question is, when you have a lot of turmoil in whatever party there is, right?
We just had elections this weekend, it was lots of fun.
I had.
Yeah.
So these are all precinct committee that have been voted on and are set, for how long do they have to fill that?
It's a two-year, yeah. Every, all of them right now are elected. We have not appointed anybody, so we know they're all elected PCs.
One of the things that's interesting is that I've received a lot of emails and a lot of people said, well, this is not a political position, but it is a political position.
Darn true, it's a political ambition.
I think the community understands that that is part of the job.
Right.
It is political. And they're assuming that, you know, in favor of one person that has a lot of knowledge, which is absolutely true, but it's not political. So I think that that has to be really clarified, like you were saying, that it is political and what, and all the situations are making political so that people understand that it's not just coming in and doing a great job of being a recorder, but it's also the other side to it, that some people aren't qualified to do, don't want to do, but don't know that it's there. So we need to make sure that they understand that these are things that are going to be required.
Yeah, so for example, if the Attorney General comes down and basically challenges you, you know, like she did with Mr. Stevens when he was appointed as temporary elections director, you're going to have to fight that. You're going to have, now, if someone doesn't have the political gumption or whatever the word might be, or moxie to go take on that fight like he did, and he won, by the way, he won that fight, him and his attorneys won that fight, but that's part of the job. Part of the job is being able to have that disagreement with other elected officials in the state of Arizona. So, I mean, we got to make sure that that candidate can, I'm not saying that he's going to be easy to replace, I'm just saying that they have to have somewhat of that skillset. And then like Mr. Stevens, you know, when he first took the job, I'm sure, I'm not speaking for you, but I'm sure there was a learning curve initially in the first year or so that he was, he was in office.
It was, it was a sharp curve.
Right, so they also have the, they have to have the, it's the, I don't want to use a politically correct term.
Aptitude.
Aptitude or sort of the ability to quickly dive into Title 16 and Title 48 and understand the laws regarding that. And they have to be someone who can read well and understand statute, right? So there's a whole aspect to that job. So there's three actually. So there's the administrative, the legal and the political. So there's three, three key components to that position that I see that have to have qualifications in each. Mr. Crosby.
Mr. Chair, you spoke of the lawsuit that was from the Attorney General against the county regarding his appointment to be the interim elections director, so we know that that can happen.
Correct.
The recorder can be the interim elections director.
That is correct.
Speaking of duties.
So you just want a weigh-in?
Yeah, I just want, I just want to get input from, right? I mean, I think, and then from the political standpoint, if you're a precinct committee man, it again validates the importance of that job, whether you're Republican or Democrat, you know, if there's a vacancy, especially in the legislature, they have significant influence over who fills those seats because they, in that case, they only provide three names and we only get to pick from those three names. But in this case, you know, I don't see why there should be a lack of importance since we are technically a political subdivision of the state and designated powers by the legislature. We are sort of a sub legislative body.
I think in this kind of situation, you want as much input from everybody as you can get. So allowing, you know, precinct committees, I'm not against that. I think then they can also spread the word.
Right.
We do have to replace it with a Republican. It's just, you know, they kind of know the intricacies and that's not the only, but again, that's just an input that we're looking for.
Yeah, yeah, so I think Ms. Gilman did a pretty good job of outlining, where I'm saying is step three where it's got solicit applications, all right? I would add a sub step under there that, you know, request input from the Cochise County Republican Party through an official recommendation from the precinct committee.
Mr. Chair, I would like to add for the benefit of the public that in some cases the precinct committee men do make the choice either as who the candidate will be, in the case of Sheriff Daniels, who was selected to be the sheriff candidate by the precinct committee man, thereby assuring that he was going to be the sheriff as he was unopposed, or as one of three candidates in the case of Mr. Diaz. So this, this is not, this is not far back in our memories, these are pretty recent events.
Right, right. So I mean, that's just, it's up for discussion again, we'll ask Ms. Gilman to build it in here and then we'll vote on it in an official meeting, of course, but I mean, I just wanted to kind of put that to the two of you guys to see if you're interested in getting that input. But it is, it is a partisan political position.
Right.
And whoever gets it is going to have to run for reelection in basically 20 months. Well, less than 20 months because the primary is in August, all right? So you're talking 18 months, all right? So in 18 months and they need a base of support, you know, from the party and having that party support is a big part of running. So, Mr. Crosby.
I believe the Chair's points are well taken because we will get input no matter what. And so might as well make an official process for that input that we know that we're going to get about this issue.
When we get all this input, is it something that's done in public like this?
So from my recollection, we've done, we receive the application materials, those are then compiled, like I said, by the clerk of the board and then we would have a meeting for the board members to deliberate on those, on all that materials and comments that you've received. Would that need to be an executive session, that deliberation?
It's permissive. If you're going to do an employment action, that could be an executive session.
When you say that can be, is it, yes, it is or no?
It's permissive. You don't, you don't have to.
You don't have to.
I think it's often done out of consideration for the candidates, really.
To not, yeah.
On video getting grilled.
And then we take that large group and you can whittle it down to a smaller group to then interview and that would be a separate executive session meeting to do the interviews.
I had a comment for the benefits of this body and members of the public. I've been involved in such a selection process with the city council where if you wanted it to be public, you could, you could have it public. If you wanted it to not be public, you could have it not public for selection of the city council.
I mean, we could have more, more discussion on that, but I mean, just from my experience from the corporate side of the equation, you open it up to applications, right? Anybody can submit, right? That's qualified, they got to be Republican, they got to live in the county, you know, they're qualified, basically. All right, so we solicit those applications. We could get 20, we can get 25, we can get two, you know? So I mean, just like you and I, when we were up in Phoenix, that one guy was telling us that they had this vacancy and then they got like 33 applications to fill the vacancy and then election time come, only one guy went out and got signatures. So there's this, there's this thing where people want the quick and easy route to elected office without the trouble that particularly you, you went through to get to where you are, right? So it's not an easy task to get elected to public office, it's an easy task to get appointed. So I think we need to add that degree of scrutiny in there, so it's not just this, oh yeah, here you go, you're welcome, because I don't want that perception in the public either that it was some kind of a gift to somebody.
Right.
I mean, I think, I think we have to create some rigor in this process to make, to make it at least challenging for someone to get the position.
When I was hiring for to restap the election department, that was part of my task to hire, the applicants were not publicly known until we called them in for an interview. So if I remember right, if, they wouldn't fall under public records request until they were formally identified as we were going to interview them. At that point, they can be public that.
Right, so what we could do is if we get 25 applications, we can go through those 25 and whittle it down to five.
Mm-hmm.
And then those five would be subject to interview.
And at that point, they would be public.
Then they would be public. So, so I mean, that would be generally the process, right? We can decide whether we want three or five or eight, I'm just saying five.
And to clarify, their, their letters and resumes would be public, those five or however many.
Right, right.
And the interviews themselves could be an executive session.
Or both.
Or both, it just depends.
Yeah, but I mean, that was just, I'm just throwing a number out. I don't know whether it's three or five or whatever we decide, I'm just saying if we get 20-some applications, we might pick five and then...
And then we could talk about, we would meet with precinct committee people and then they could say whatever, whoever they wanted to recommend or whatever that, and then we take that into consideration, we do everything.
Let them do, let them do three, like they do for, say, hey, give us three names, who you guys think would, would be best suited to fill this position?
And why?
And why? They still, they still have to apply, they still have to put in an application, they still have to put in a resume.
Right.
It's not just a, you know, they have...
They have to go through the...
They still have to go, we just get, we just get that recommendation as part of the consideration. Whether we pick one of those to be the last five or not is up to us. We could reject all three of them in the, in the, in the review of the 20 or we could pick one or two or all three of them to go to the interview process.
I think that's fair and that's why, I mean, you know, opening it up to more people to be involved and so, you know, get more transparent and accountable for doing the right thing.
When the county had to replace a supervisor, if memory's right, 12 people applied and each supervisor got to pick two to interview. And then you interview just the six, out of that six.
That's it.
So it all, it depends on how many people apply.
Right.
You may only get two people or one, or you may get, I had a job opening, when I first took the job, it paid like eleven and a half dollars an hour and I had 45 people apply for it. You know, it's, you just never know.
So after we go through that and you select someone, there's a, you know, you appoint them in public session, we can do a background check as well? We recommend doing that vetting, criminal background check, especially in a position as important as recorder. And then the question is, do you want any public input?
Yeah, I think, I think we do. I think, I think after we pick the five, again, I just, that's a number I just keep throwing out.
Right.
I'm just saying, whatever it is, six, five, three, whatever, whatever the final pool is, then we allow public input on that final pool and then get a, get a gauge on what the public thinks at that point.
Yeah, and that public input would be through the form of a meeting?
Yes, through the form of a meeting. So we would, we would hold it here basically and say, these are the five, on this date, we're going to take input from the public on these five or six candidates and we'll just let people come up and...
So you're going to do like a special call to the public?
Yeah.
With the time, just such a reasonable...
Yeah.
Yeah.
So everybody gets a chance to weigh in.
If you have a chance to make your appointment for a leave, I'm more than willing to have them come in.
Well, that's a good point.
Give them.
That is my, was my next question is...
Yeah, that's a good point because if we can get somebody appointed, is that legal, Paul, to get them appointed or to identify them as appointed?
I think you have to identify them, you can't appoint them at the time, but actually...
Right, right. To make, to make, to make the, what is that? It's not like, it's not like member-elect, it's like member appoint, appointable.
Yeah, it is like a member-elect, right?
Yeah, it's like, to where they're, they're, they're not assumed statutorily the role yet, but they have an opportunity to spend a week or two getting the handoff.
Well, somebody who's interested in the job should definitely take advantage of that opportunity.
Yeah, so your last day is the 28th?
28th. So that is a tight schedule. The question I have is...
So if we can get somebody by the 20th?
By the 20th and working backward from there.
And then we'd have to have the public info, you know, input?
Mm-hmm. So if you allow for, yeah, if you allow for a week or two weeks.
So the 21st, rather, so we would need something by the 21st, appoint by the 21st so that he has that entire week to train whoever that person is.
Yeah.
This is a busy time of year because the legislature's in session.
Right.
Or going through probably 60 election type bills.
Oh, so that's why you're retiring.
No, I actually like that part of it. We have ongoing lawsuits within state that we are nominal, we have our own lawsuits that is going to court on the 11th. So there's ongoing things I can't finish before I leave, but I guess in time you work with the new one coming in, you kind of give them an idea of what to expect when you sit down on the first of March. You want to blindside them on the first day?
No, that's what I'm saying. So if we can make the appointment-elect or whatever the heck we want to call it on the 21st, again, then the official appointment doesn't occur until the first day of March would be the third of March would be Monday, right? Or will we do it March 1st? Yeah, because he vacates on the 28th, so we'd have to...
So if you made the appointment on the 21st, then make it effective March 1st.
Okay, make it effective March 1st.
And then, but working backward from the 21st, the time for that open recruitment period, would you want it to just be a week until, say, the 7th?
So yeah, now this is the, the hard part here is right locking the dates down on the calendar here. So, I mean, I think, so do we, do we have to do a board meeting to put this out?
Yep.
You can direct it, you can direct the staff to take...
Okay, all right, so we don't need to do a board meeting, so we could, we could say today to put out a notice to the public to, if anyone is interested in filling the position, please provide the following documents and have them submitted by, what's the date?
7th would be, you know, a little over a week before, you know, we typically do two-week recruitments in HR, but that does put you very tight on meetings. You'd have to do everything the week of...
So what if we say the, when is our, I can't, if Laura knows, what is our regular next, next meeting on the 11th?
Yeah.
So make that, make that the deadline so that we can put it on the agenda.
And then when will we do the public input?
So that would be, if we do the 11th is the day we screen the...
Do it on the 13th? February 11th, you're screening.
Yeah, so they have to be submitted by the 11th because they're going to be screened on the 11th.
Right.
And then...
You're going to have to slow it down before the public knows.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying. So if we do the original screening on the 11th and then on the, is that 13th the working session?
Uh, no, we have, we don't have anything on the 13th, but we could do this...
We can do a working session on the 13th to officially...
I would prefer the 12th. I would prefer the 12th for my own reasons.
You want to do it on the 12th? Okay, all right, we can do it on the 12th. We'll whittle it down on the 12th.
I just have reasons why I went here.
So whatever number we, we decide, I mean, we don't have to lock that number until we review it. We may end up with six or seven that we can't decide at the time.
So, okay.
So whatever that number is, we do that on the 12th and then we put the notice out that afternoon and these are the six or five applicants that we have chosen and we will receive public input from them. And then let's, what would be the 18th to get public input?
Yep, and you could do a meeting on the 18th, a special meeting with the public on, or you could do a, the interviews on the 18th and then...
I would...
Have public, because it would have to be a special meeting, you could have a special meeting, go in to do your interviews, come back, receive public input on the people you interviewed.
So that's going to be a long day.
Yeah, but I think it's, you got to do it that way, right?
Yeah, so...
And you could even decide that day.
So put the five names out, that gives them time to prepare too, the five or six people, right? So if you put the, put the names out...
On the 12th?
Yeah, on the 12th and then on the 18th, they, we do public input and then that afternoon we go do the interviews.
Okay.
So input in the morning and then interviews in the afternoon and then we, we basically the 20th or 21st, we vote.
Or you could vote on the 18th too.
You want to do the 18th as a vote on the 18th?
If you wanted, you could, or you could.
Are we allowed to have an executive session to deliberate after we interview everybody? Do we have to do that in public?
No, absolutely, yes, you can do that, that's an employment matter and, yeah.
So we can do that in executive session, we could have our, our internal discussion on that and then we can come out and make it official, I guess.
Yeah.
Is that okay? Kathleen, you're good?
So just to reiterate, we have February 11th is the deadline for letters of intent.
Applications and everything, yes, everything has to be submitted by the 11th.
To the clerk of the board and then on the 12th, the board will meet to review those applications and information.
Right.
And then, and determine your finalists on the 12th.
Right, right.
And then February 18th, public input first and then you'll have interviews of your finalists.
Right.
Deliberation and executive session and potential appointments.
Correct.
Okay.
And then that gives us a cushion if we have to bump a day or two to the right, we could do that if you have...
Like on the 19th, yeah.
Yeah, if something happened, that gives us a little cushion.
Yep.
You get to the final selection, if you let me, if you want, I'm willing to give final selections a walk through the office.
Yeah, there you go, they could do that too, after we pick the five.
Show the job, how would you think?
Gives them a last chance to bow out, when they find out what they're getting into.
Okay, alright.
Alright, so, let's, let me hang on, I guess, do I need to do a motion or adjourn? I could just adjourn.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Just want to say, I've worked with David, you know, since I came here, and it's been a pleasure to work with him, you do wanna find someone with aptitude, because he'll be hard to replace, you know, when he called me with the question, he always, I've already read the law, and had a good idea about, you know, what he was thinking about.
So we are including that aspect about having some legal.
Well, I mean, they just have to have a.
You need a smart cookie.
They have to have the ability to understand legal advice, understand statute, and then make a determination or decision based on that.
So, when we put that out there.
We can include that, we can include in our press release some information about qualifications that the Board is particularly interested in.
Because I.
But it isn't a qualification by statute.
You guys can get with Ms. Gilman and give her inputs if you want, you don't have to do it here.
Alright.
So, alright, adjourned?